All right.
I'll get back to you tomorrow. Shovels are tricky.
You know, you could literally just say that to Justin.
I call the City of Bend Accessibility Advisory Committee on this beautiful day of April 24th, 2025 hybrid meeting to order at 1:01 PM. For an equitable experience, please announce your name before commenting. This helps the blind, visually impaired, and those online knowing to know who is speaking. Where speakers' pictures or names do not appear. We will begin with a roll call of Quebec members and encourage each member to provide a self-description. And I'll go ahead and go first. My name is Liz Woodfin. I'm a blond-haired, blue-eyed woman. I go by she/her pronouns, and I'm wearing a jean jacket and a yellow knit top.
Hi, this is Derek Offbauer, Vice Chair of Quebec here at Council Chambers. He/him pronouns, brown hair, brown eyes, wearing a blue sweater.
Hello, this is Stephanie Utzman, and I'm here in Council Chambers. I am a white woman with long brown curly hair, brown eyes, glasses, and wearing a cream-colored top.
Hi, excuse me, this is Liz Dieter-Martin. I'm here in Chamber Councils. A white woman with white olive hair and a green forest ranger shirt today. And I go by she/her.
This is Carl Burnett, he/him, here in Council Chambers today. I have blonde hair and glasses, and I'm wearing a Boston Red Sox sweatshirt today.
And for those online?
Yeah, this is John Halen. I kind of look like a cop. I got a mustache. I'm a large, white, balding male with some sweet sunglasses.
This is Aaron Rivers. I'm attending online. I have a gray baseball cap and a black shirt on, and I'm riding in a car with a seatbelt. I'm a white male.
This is Andrew Caruana. I'm attending online. My camera's off because I'm still feeling a bit under the weather today, but I am a short, white male who's got shorter curly, wavy blonde hair, brown glasses, blue eyes. Feel like I'm fairly average-looking, I don't know.
Hi, this is Whitney Bennett. She/her pronouns. I'm attending online, and I have, I'm a white female, white woman, and I have a black fleece on, and I have sandy blonde hair.
Is that everybody online? Did I get that correct?
Is there anyone else online who hasn't identified themselves yet?
I'm Alisa McCray. My camera's off. But I'm blonde, wear a black hoodie, and I wish I had some cool sunglasses.
All right, well, let's go ahead and move on to the City of Bend land acknowledgement. Do I have any volunteers to read the land acknowledgement?
Maybe you did it, I think I did it last month.
I'll do it, Carl. I'll save you that time. So we would like to acknowledge the beautiful land that has been Oregon north to the Columbia River is the original homeland of the Confederate tribes of Warm Springs. The tribe ceded this land in the Treaty of 1855 while retaining regular and customary hunting, fishing, and gathering rights. The Wana Llama or Warm Springs, the Wasco and Northern Paiute people inhabited this area in certain seasonal times that clearly established their presence. It's also important to note that the clamorous trail ran north through this region, the great Cilio Falls trading grounds. This trade route expanded the impact of commerce between tribal nations. We acknowledge and thank the original stewards of this land. It's our hope that guests continue to honor and care for this land.
That was Derek?
That was Derek.
All right. The next agenda item is approval of the corrected minutes for the March 27th, 2025 meeting. There was a minor correction to my last name in the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll move to approve. Oh, sorry, this is Carl. Wait a second.
This is Stephanie, I'll second.
Are we all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion carries to approve the corrected minutes. All right, next item we have is public comment. Lisa, do we have anybody online?
This is Lisa, there is no one online.
Okay, we're moving through. Next item we have is the Human Rights and Equity Commission future feature. And we have Andres Portetella, Equity Inclusion Director, and Agatha Ventura from HREC. Welcome both of you.
Thank you so much, everyone. I am Agatha Ventura, pronouns she/her. Imagine me walking up right there with Andres, and I hope to enjoy in person another time. But thank you for having us. I had the pleasure of joining the summit back in January and hearing a common thread, while a lot of the groups shared that there's a real need for meaningful connections between our groups. And so we connected with Liz about it, and here we are. Andres Portetella here will be giving a high-level overview of our commission's work plan, and we of course extend an open invitation to all Quebec members to join our meetings, events, and engage with all the work we have coming up. So I'll pass it over to Andres now to take it away. Thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you, Agatha, for that description. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, and as it's coming up, I'll do the formalities of being in this space. There we go. So, so thank you for inviting me into this space. Actually, it's not going to let me do both at the same time, so that's okay. Actually, there we go. So, for those who haven't had the chance to interact with me, my name is Andres Portetella. My pronouns are he/him el. I'm the Equity and Inclusion Director for the City of Bend, but also the Staff liaison for the Human Rights and Equity Commission. Visual description, I'm a black man wearing a gray sweater with a light brown cardigan over top. I'm wearing clear-framed glasses with a curly black Afro. And I start off with this to show how I'm showing up, both in my body, our stories and experiences. I want to ground us in this discussion on intersectionality. Intersectionality reminds us of our identities, race, gender, ability, class, language, and more. Those intersections compound injustice and make up lack of access. It's not just a framework, it's not just academic, but it also allows us to think about the connective tissue between HREC and Quebec. Our work is different in scope, but very much so aligned. We both advocate for dignity, we both advocate for representation and structural change, and specifically in communities that have been excluded from civic experience. So what I'm going to do in our discussion is talk about the bridge that we are trying to build in the, not just the words, but in practice. I'll talk about HREC's work plan, then I'll give some connective moments based on the work plan that Quebec has, but then also what HREC has going on. So with that, I will advance the slides. So, on the screen you'll see our, as soon as it catches up, you will see our focus areas. Perfect. On these focus areas, I'll say that HREC's primary goal is to advise City Council on policies, on practices that impact human rights, equity, and inclusion within the community. That commission works to identify barriers to equity and then make recommended strategies for dismantling those barriers. And so HREC's pure focus is to create systemic change with the belief that the entire community is centered, while centering those who are directly impacted. The way that we're able to do that is through these four focus areas. The first one being advisory role. We recommend policy and practice changes to City Council through an equity lens, which we are building in this moment, and I'll talk about that shortly. Through community engagement, we build trust and facilitate two-way connection with the community. Education and awareness, we expand public understanding of human rights, equity, and inclusion through events, campaigns, and learning tools. And then lastly is policy advocacy. We analyze and recommend policy changes that addresses structural barriers and advance equity. That is, and what I'll do is I'll go through each one of these. I'll say that the advisory level is very high level. I'm not going to go very deep in that. It is not a subcommittee because it's our pure focus. HREC was created to give council recommendations. Quebec was created to give city manager recommendations. And I think these are two important levers of driving change. Quebec has the ability to work with city manager and push that change on the organizational administrative policy level. Quebec, I mean, HREC has the ability at the council level to push our elected leaders to creating that larger framework for, for the city council to give city manager direction. So two different policy, two different drivers, but definitely can be working in its in sync. And also, if there are any questions, please just stop me. I tend to just drone on sometimes, so just tell me to slow down. And then additionally, if there are those questions, we can just converse. So the first one, the first subcommittee I want to talk about, and I think there's some meaningful overlap that can take place in this space, is the Policy Advocacy Subcommittee. It was created, the purpose is to create and implement strategies for inclusive, sustained, and trust-building engagement with Bend's marginalized communities, ensuring that their experience informs HREC's recommendations to the City Council and influence city decision-making. The timeframe for this work is from April 25th to December 2026. We're in the timeframe right now, and this is operationalized through three goals. And there's objectives in how we do this and kind of matriculated. But if Quebec decides to join one of these subcommittees or folks decide to engage in those subcommittees, you'll be working on developing and institutionalizing an equity lens for decision-making. What happens at this moment is Quebec will receive a presentation, I mean, HREC will receive a presentation much like Quebec does. And in that, HREC gives those recommendations to council. But historically, there hasn't been a succinct process for doing that. It's largely been individuals who have a particular lens saying, here's how I feel. And that has strong merit, but what we're trying to do is get to a point where we can have a similar set of questions and give a similar set of recommendations for all of our recommendations to council. We would love participation on that. Additionally, we identify and recommend equity-aligned policies. And so again, that goes back to our policy advocacy space, connecting those individual presentations around a wide gambit of what the city does. We give those recommendations to council. And then build internal policy literacy and equity analysis capacity. So at this moment, we, HREC does not function as an education space. Really what we're moving towards, and once we adopt this during our next meeting, we will be working to create those set of questions and then educating staff on like, hey, if you come to HREC, expect these questions. And so that's part of our work. The next thing I want to talk about is our Community Engagement Subcommittee. The purpose is to create and implement strategies for inclusive and sustained trust-building with the City of Bend's marginalized community, while also making those recommendations to City Council influencing decision-making. So we build trust with community. We additionally create inclusive communication channels while influencing city policy through community input, and it's on that same timeline. This may sound a little bit amorphous right now, because what we're trying to do is figure out what's the best way to capture community voice. So it's going to be through inviting people in, but also going out and really meeting folks where they're at. This, I skipped a slide. Education and awareness, again, to increase public understanding of institutional awareness around human rights, equity, and inclusion through culturally relevant education training programs and partnership that centers the lived experience of Bend residents. And so again, developing and delivering equity-centered educational programming, collaborating with internal equity partners, and advancing organizational learning on human rights and equity. Same timeline. I think Quebec has done an amazing job of this already. Quebec created those resources for business owners to figure out how we create more accessible spaces. HREC would love a presentation on that, or even connecting it to some of the outreach and education we can do as a body. I think sharing some of these really important connective points allow us to affirm each other, but then also move into a space where we're operationalizing it as a city, while also thinking about the amazing and phenomenal work that was done by this, by this committee, but then as well what our Bend business community was able to highlight. Some points of connection. And so thinking about how do we pull in those subcommittees into our work? I think the first one is our walk and roll event. We have that coming up over the next few days. I say days, it is about a week and some change. And so how do we connect HREC to that? We have an HREC meeting in between then. It's extending that invitation as Chair Woodfin goes into that space. Additionally, next year when we are part of Sprouts Festival, we invite HREC, we invite them into that space. I created a slide, what a difference it makes when someone from this committee comes into that space and says, HREC, we want you there, or asking an HREC member, like our chair, to do that outreach and education for our HREC members. City Fest, our Lunch and Learn, I saw in our work plan for Quebec, we have the Lunch and Learn series towards the end of the year. I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to connect HREC and Quebec for some of that education and awareness for city staff. City Fest in the summer, we still don't have dates on that, so it's still TBD. But I do think, much like last year, we had HREC and Quebec at the same table. I think having shared or similar resources at the table would be wonderful. I additionally think the letters of support connecting with council. Right now, when we write letters of support or letters for advocacy, it goes to our city manager. I think one thing that we would be able to do is work through HREC and say, HREC is as a body, would you be willing to share this with our council? And so using that level there. Training and resources, again, those business resources that were created and housed on the City of Bend website, wouldn't it be lovely if HREC can be a part of that and share in that work? Welcoming Week, I think it comes up pretty often, and in my first year, Cassandra held pulling together both HREC and Quebec for the kickoff of Welcoming Week. We're not asking to do that again, but we are saying if there's a desire to create some shared programming there, how do we build that connection? Then additionally, I didn't confer with Cassandra on this last one on shared meetings, but I do think it would be wonderful to have HREC and Quebec in the same space to talk about, one, just the individual work plans, but also how do we create that uniformity? And I think it can come with being a part of the subcommittees, but I think there's that, that, the thing that can happen when we're all in the same space, talking within a similar language set about that intersectionality and that intersectional approach. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm going to pass it back to my chair and to close this out.
Thank you so much, Andres, for that comprehensive overview. Quebec, we really look forward to seeing you within future engagements. I love the idea of a shared meeting, so I will second that motion. And thank you, Liz, for agreeing to join our next HREC meeting, which is next week, and our door is always open for any questions and comments. Thank you so much for having us today.
Great, thank you both. This is Liz Woodfin. I'm just so pleased to be able to connect and collaborate, and I look forward to just more shared spaces, more dialogue, and development of the wonderful things that we can do. So thank you both for being here and presenting that to us today.
Perfect, thank you.
Carl, you have any questions?
When is the time going to change?
Yeah, so the, every HREC meeting is the last Wednesday between 4:00 and 6:30 PM? Did I get that right, Lisa? Four, oh, perfect, thank you. 4:30 and 6:30, so it's the last Wednesday of every month, pretty consistently. Yeah, we'd love to have you.
April 30th, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We had some shuffling on our agenda, and normally Cassandra presents the accessibility equity manager update later on in our agenda, but we moved that up. And so without further ado, Cassandra, lead the way.
Thank you, Liz, appreciate it. Can you all see the PowerPoint presentation rekind of joined for us? And it should say Accessibility Manager Update.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yep, Agatha, thank you so much for joining us, and Andres, thanks for the presentation. We're really looking forward to joining HREC next week and looking forward to joint collaboration between our groups. I know it's been something that we've discussed previously, and we're just really looking forward to that. So with that, I'll get to our updates here. Wanted to review, just a tremendous thank you for those who attended and volunteered and supported during the Sprout Film Festival. It was such a success, it was such a great time. The movies were fantastic, the duration of the movies was really powerful, and I think so many of us walked away with a lot of thoughts, and we debriefed with each other, so that was really great. Here's a photo from the introduction from Full Access High Desert. Thanks to John for that presentation. Here's a few shout-outs, because you know I love them. Amanda Hamer, thank you for all of your work organizing and facilitating, and I think really leading the way for them to be able to have the tabling opportunity. We love that, we love the opportunity to share conversations with different organizations and nonprofits and also members attending, so that was great. Thank you to Liz Woodfin, our chair, for tabling at the matinee show. Liz, it was wonderful to see you. Liz Dieter-Martin for tabling at the evening showing. It was so wonderful to see you and speak with you. Wonderful to see Stephanie Utzman and Aaron Rivers and his family attend and represent Quebec as well. And thanks to city staff members who attended, including Lindsay, Melissa, Amy, Stephanie, and Andres. Very thankful for that, it was a great event. I just opened it up, if anyone wants to say anything about the event who attended or have thoughts, open it up to you all. You're also welcome to debrief during the roundtable, but now would be a nice time if anyone wanted to share anything.
This is Aaron. I attended, and I was really impressed by it, my first time going. Definitely going to be going in the future. It's a really cool event, the movies were great, and really appreciate all the effort people put into making it happen. Yeah, really great, lots of positivity.
Well said, Aaron. Anyone else?
This is Liz Dieter-Martin. Yeah, I agree, I second what Aaron said, and I won't miss it next year. It's great.
Wonderful, okay. With that, I'll move on. This was, it's not our official pamphlet, but it was just a small flyer that we were passing out to folks in community to really encourage them to interact with Quebec. And one of the great ways, I think, that you all do that as a committee is welcoming people into our public comment areas, and then whether it's online contacting our accessibility department and having it passed on to Quebec, I think we have some fantastic engagement with community, and it's a real powerful way to connect, you know, the issues and the barriers to access that we're seeing in community, be filtered through Quebec, and then hopefully some meaningful action and change impact is happening as a result. So this is what we were passing out. We had some really good questions, some really good conversation about what the committee does, and what it's like to serve on Quebec as well. And thank you to both Liz's for being there to answer those questions and be present. Who, Carl, are you ready? Here's, here we are for our next update, so I wanted to provide this, and this was the main reason I wanted to have an opportunity, not at the end of the meeting, was to really give this some time and space to explain where we are internally, the work that's been done, and what our next steps are, and where we can have Quebec interact and participate in this upcoming opportunity for advancement of the initiatives of the taxi letter overview kind of proposed. So, from the time that the taxi letter was approved by Quebec till now, our departments have been having meetings between accessibility, licensing, and community development, and code enforcement, along with some other departments, getting information on the best way to implement some of the changes that the taxi letter called out. And specifically, what we've been able to identify between departments is that there is an opportunity to amend the application process. So we found out that taxi companies every year have to be relicensed and recertified, and in doing so, they affirm certain boxes, right? And right now, it really is just kind of a checkbox that they are following either ADA or the code that we have under, in our Bend, our Bend code. And so what we have the opportunity to do is we've identified that we could affirmatively request information that demonstrates how these kinds of companies are being compliant with accessible fleet, right? And so it's not just, yes, we're following the law, but like here are the affirmative steps that we're taking. So there's a modification to the license and the application that we can work on. So that's one of the things that we'll talk about in a couple of slides. But that is an exciting update, and I think a way that we're really going to make an impact. And in doing so, those applications come in in January, so we've got a few months in addition to the editing of the actual application. We have a few months to also create awareness for those few companies, and there's not a ton of them, but for the companies that are planning to, who have historically applied, we've got an opportunity to raise awareness of what they'll need to provide to us to be able to be in compliance and be able to have a successful license approved by the City of Bend. So, and also, bonus, as it says, we identified this other project, which potentially maybe some Quebec members would be interested in. So one of the, one of the areas of my work that I work on specifically in conjunction with licensing and community development is when there are events in the community and they require permitting or licensing. So if you think about some of the festivals that we see downtown occasionally that pop up, usually they have to apply and have kind of an ADA or an accessibility plan that we review. We review their bathroom plan, usually with porta-potties. We review some other areas where accessibility is really important to ensure that they have the right rules and regulations and that they're in compliance with best practices. So our, our guide that we provide for them is a few years old, so we really think there's an opportunity for Quebec and our department to refresh that and then really promote it through community of saying, like, when you are planning events, not just those that you need permitting or licensing, but when you're planning any kind of event, here's some really great ways that you can ensure accessibility. So that was a bonus. It doesn't have a ton to do with taxi, but the kind of Venn diagram was that, hey, licensing has identified, there are some great ways for us to infuse accessibility into these different areas. So with that, I'll go to the next slide. This is some of the code language that we have that allows us to be able to modify that application and the enforcement policy. And so really in chatting with code enforcement, the hope is because we preventively and proactively work in that application stage, there won't be a ton of reason and need for code to become involved, but they, code enforcement will when needed. But that's just kind of the kind of spectrum, if you will, of how, how things may happen. So it tells you here that failure to meet or maintain any of the requirements or qualifications set forth in this code, as well as materially making false statements or representations, could result in a suspension, revocation, or refusal to issue a license if the taxi company has violated or not met any of the provisions of this code. So moving forward to the next section, if the permit or license shall be denied if the activity does not comply with this code or other applicable law or regulation, and B is the applicant does not meet city standards. So under those two kind of sub A and B, we see the area that we have really to be able to write in, into our application, and then to not issue a permit if, if the particular taxi companies are unable or unwilling to comply and provide kind of a list of the fleet that would be accessible to us. And that's above and beyond just the reasonable accommodations, right? It's, that is just the basic fleet, obviously, at all times. Obviously, at all times, taxi companies should be providing reasonable accommodations to passengers with disabilities as well. So the next steps, um we have, so we can work on and our my department is doing that too with amending the application process with licensing um and talking about the uh annual reissuance and what that looks like. Um and then also the requirement for details related to demographics of the fleet. So we're working on those two items right now um together with the two departments. And then how do we create awareness and letters in contact with the taxi companies to let them know that these changes are going to be impending and give them enough adequate and sufficient notice to be able to become compliant, even if they're not, right? Because ultimately, I think that's what we all we all want um for those January applications to come through, to have taxi companies and services that are uh providing the minimum requirements under the ADA um and then providing um you know, people in our community with uh rides not dependent on ability. So those are the kinds of um things that we are doing uh between departments. And then I thought up to the group, if you'd like to do this, but it'd be fantastic to have a COBAC subgroup meeting that would be noticed and scheduled in either May or June to review the timeline, um some of the application changes, to provide feedback um to look at what we would be doing in terms of outreach to those companies uh and then just provide um more information around um best practices. So if the group is interested in that, I could and and those people who might be interested in that subgroup meeting, um I thought we could have just a few minute discussion on um if May or June works better for your calendars and then who might be interested in that as we would need to officially notice um and schedule this. Um so I open it back up to to anyone who might want to share feedback or or share if you're interested in joining um this subgroup conversation.
This is Carl. Um of course, I'm interested. I think June would probably work better for me. Although, yeah, I think there's a range of dates that could work, but I like the idea of having an official subcommittee um take on this review and stuff. I've uh I was interested to see a couple of slides ago. There was some language that mentioned taxis and TNCs. For those that don't know, um TNCs are Transportation Network Companies, which is the official term for services who were in lift. Um I wonder, Cassandra, if you could um just um update us with any information that you've heard or found out about licensing of TNCs?
Yeah, I and I don't know that we include if we had that in our letter specifically, but this focus of this kind of initial scoping has primarily been on the taxi end of things, Carl, but we could certainly open that up and then have specifically licensing give us some feedback on the TNCs specifically in ahead of uh that that subgroup meeting that would take place in either May or June, potentially June. So, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, we did. We did leave it out of the letter sort of intentionally like I want to see them be accessible too, but it would seem like a whole different ball of wax. I don't know. If you go back one slide, I think that was the one that said uh or maybe it was even the one before that that had mention of TNCs. Um I missed it. Ah, there we go. Refuse to issue a license if the taxi company or TNC is violated.
Yeah. So it's it's certainly, this is Cassandra, Carl, certainly in the code, I um was just scoping out just kind of what COBAC had specifically had in the letter um regarding taxis, but I think it's valid to be if we're doing it at the same time, we could still have those conversations with licensing and kind of try to determine the best ways. It's going to be a little bit different, right? But I I I'm I'm all for that if that's a direction that COBAC as a as a group wants to go in or potentially the subgroup as kind of like a secondary measure um behind the Taxi Letter that was approved.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh this is Liz Dieter Martin. Um yeah, I'd be interested in helping. I can see uh you know, trying to bridge the from the 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 code, the the uh the language, the legal legal language and then the vendors or event people um or even the taxi companies to uh you know, put it in their terms and yeah, like you said, proactively support them in making uh themselves accessible. So, yeah.
Thank you, Liz. Thanks, Carl.
This is Liz Woodfin. I'd like to be a part of that dialogue too. Um I have some questions. Um and I can hold some of those for when the subgroup um meets because I don't want to um monopolize too much of the time here today, but um my questions are related to um will we provide the taxi companies that are currently approved and on file notice that these are, these changes are going to be upcoming, so they have time to prepare. Um and because what I can see down the road is um the possibility that some of these taxi companies might not be able to uh have the provision of um a wheelchair accessible vehicle in their fleet um right away. And then that could potentially limit accessibility of those running companies. Um particularly in the population who I serve and support, who utilize um those services on on the daily that's paid through their Medicaid waiver. So um I'll just leave it at that, but I I want those questions to kind of be addressed and um on everybody's radar.
Thank you, Liz. This is Cassandra. I definitely agree. I think providing ample notice um and that kind of onramping is really critical um for partnership with those companies and then also just to be good partners in um in accessibility, right? We're we're trying to to say like, yes, you've historically clicked this box to say that you've been accessible, but we know that potentially that may not be the case. And here is education awareness materials in order for you to become more accessible and finding different resources potentially. I know that right now grants and funding right now for accessibility are very much up in the air, but I do think that we could create some resources, similarly what Leadership Bend created um for small businesses looking for support in terms of updating or modifying uh their uh facilities and or um uh potentially kind of what they have in terms of assets uh to be more accessible for more people in our community. So great point, Liz, thank you. Uh anyone else interested in joining and you could think about it and get back to me and email me, but um I'll definitely put that out there in case anyone else is in in addition for those folks who are not in attendance today.
Yeah, hey, Cassandra, this is Derek in Council Chambers. Um I was also thinking another opportunity on the kind of the education side is to provide maybe some resources for these taxi companies about, you know, what it is that they would need to do to either existing vehicles or purchasing new vehicles. And that's something that, you know, at Cascades East Transit, we all of our vehicles are accessible. We also use vans that they're accessible and have lifts. And we have our maintenance team that knows a lot about um how to install these, how to maintain them, where to purchase them. Um and if, you know, they they could, you know, potentially purchase bulk items. So I'd be happy to participate in that conversation and and lend the expertise from the transit side um to support these companies.
That'd be great, Derek. Thank you very much for that. I could see that's a really nice way of not just saying like, hey, you need to comply, but hey, compliance is really important and here are some great resources um and uh uh in individual knowledge and um collective kind of awareness and community that would be really helpful. So wonderful. Okay, so uh preliminarily I have, oops, sorry, go ahead. Nobody, okay. Uh I've got um both Lizzas and I also have Carl and Derek interested. Uh and I'll extend the invitation also to the folks who have not um joined today um who had other obligations. So does that sound okay?
Great.
Great, okay. And let's move us in the slides. Wonderful. Okay, that uh that concludes my update. I just really wanted to prioritize and make sure that we had time to to fully flesh that uh conversation out and I'll really look forward to scheduling the subgroup meeting. So with that, Liz, I turn it back to you.
All right. Well, the next item on our agenda is the COBAC workpl- oh, sorry, the COBAC work plan, upcoming community events. Um specifically the walk and roll um event in May. And so I'll let I'll let um those who are part of that planning um take it over.
Yeah, and this is Derek, uh Council Chambers. I can take the lead on this. Um do appreciate the input from the transportation subgroup that had a, we, you know, we've been planning these types of walk and roll events as part of COBAC for the past couple of years. This will actually be our second. Um and we're excited about this one. It's going to be on May eighth and um the tour is scheduled from three thirty to five. We would leave Hawthorne Station roughly right around four. So like I think I think Ariel has a has a conflict, so he can come at um at four PM. Um and basically, the the point of this is to really showcase um some transportation accessibility, some of the good things, some of the mediocre things, some of the not so great things um in terms of walking and rolling throughout the neighborhood, which is the the Bend Central District. And so what we're looking to do is we have a route planned out and I believe Cassandra, I don't know if you have the route on the next slide, but we we can talk about the route in a little bit. But um overall, there's a there are a lot of transportation projects happening um in the Bend Central District. It's a growing area. There's a lot of uh pedestrian bicycle transit vehicle activity. And so really the goal is to to focus on a walking route that act is going to access Juniper Park. It's going to be in Hawthorne Station, which is um CET's transit station. Um and as part of that, CET has done a lot of work in this past year to renovate um our facility and make it safer, make it um more accessible. We also have like EV charging stations. We repositioned the bus queuing uh to make it safer. And then we pulled off the the bus shelters and the stops on the Safeway side of the street. So that allows uh better access on Hawthorne Avenue. Um and that's a project that that our organization organization has been working on for a number of years. That's finally come to fruition. So we're going to be showcasing that um throughout the day on May eighth as part of a CET open house. Um and that's just going to be kind of, you know, whoever wants to show up, it's, you know, our writers, our some of our our partners, you know, with the city and other organizations can come and stop by and check out our new improvements. We'll be doing some tours of our facility as well as offering space for um, you know, the City of Bend, Deschutes County, anybody who's doing any kind of you know, projects or programs, transportation related in the Bend Central District can come and bring a poster and uh leave it in our lobby. And we'll have snacks and refreshments and swag um as well. We're also going to be talking about a lot of CET upcoming initiatives that include um increased times for our bin routes. We're going to be going to early schedules. Again, we haven't done this since the pandemic, so six thirty AM, six AM starting times. And the service, the bin bus service will then run till seven thirty. So that's a great opportunity to expand our bin services. Um we have ADA accessible vehicles. And that's a a pretty big initiative and that's going to start on June second. Um so the idea behind the open house is to promote some of these new initiatives that CET is embarking upon um as well as talk to individuals about fairs that are going to be coming in October um and making sure that um folks are aware of that effort. And, you know, so the the route itself is is a point eight mile route and that's going to focus on looking at some sidewalk conditions, connectivity. We'll be going through Juniper Park. Um and Ian will be there to talk about uh some of the accessibility amenities there. Um there's a new playground that they installed. It's a really nice path that I walk pretty much daily um over my lunch break. And well, and Ian is going to also um talk about the off-leash reminder. And I've actually seen a lot of posts from Bend Parking Rec District on um making sure your dogs are on leash. So they've been doing a good job of raising awareness of that. Um and then, you know, basically the route is going to go down Franklin Avenue. Um which has some, you know, it it's a sidewalk, but there are some you know, driveways coming in and out. Um you know, it's not the best infrastructure. And then uh we'll be taking a right then and going along Third Street, kind of in front of the Safeway and then using the the flashing uh pedestrian beacon that's right by Hawthorne on Third Street. And then I'm crossing the street and then ending up at Dogwood. And there's currently a lot of construction happening on Second Street. That's part of the City of Bend Second Street project. Um and we're hoping that that's completed by then, but if not, we do have a detour route that can get us there uh via connected sidewalks and then over to Dogwood. So I'm arranging logistics to reserve some tables at Dogwood. We're going to debrief um you know, about what we witnessed as we walked and rolled through the area. Um and then um we're hopeful that we can have some, you know, a city staff member talking about some of the the projects, especially the Franklin Avenue project and, you know, what's the vision for that? Um are the sidewalks going to be improved as part of that project? What are some other things that the community um is going to be seeing in terms of safer pedestrian crossings? Um especially right, right there on Franklin. Um that's a really busy road with uh buses and cars pulling um out of the Safeway area. And so just looking to to get a little bit of input on like how that that area is going to be improved as well as inviting some other community partners that are involved with like community and economic development, looking at the growth of the Bend Central District, redevelopment of that area to make it a little more inviting for um pedestrians and and people who people who walk, bike, ride and roll. So that's kind of the the overall plan for that event. And then Cassandra, do you have the route on the next slide or?
I don't. I think that I had um held off on that because it was the outdated map that we had, but I do have this slide for questioning about who we're looking to outreach with, yeah, that we could go to.
Sure, yeah. So these are community partners. Um I just finished the the open house flyer that includes the walk and roll tour information and our plan is to push this out um very soon and uh as a save the date to community partners who might want to participate in this. So it's a good opportunity, I think, to A showcase, you know, new transit amenities, talk about uh expanded services that CET is is bringing um in June as well as highlight um infrastructure that will uh hopefully be improved in the future through the City Bend and and other projects.
And this is, I really want to encourage um all COBAC members, if you possibly can, to join us that day. Be great to have it have a bunch of us turn out for it.
Yeah. This is Cassandra. I totally echo Carl's uh invitation. And then also, just in terms of feedback from COBAC right now, is there anyone else uh not listed here that potentially COBAC members would be interested in sending a personalized? Um I I could send it, Derek could send it, but a personalized invitation to the event too. If there are groups or organizations or individuals that you'd like to see in attendance or specifically invited, please feel free to to share that now and we'll make sure that they're included in that outreach.
The um, sorry, this is Andrew speaking on Zoom. The acronym escapes me entirely and I don't see them on here, but the Deschutes County has um like a quarterly advisory committee that meets on developmental disabilities um and associated services and they would potentially be a good group to reach out to, to have some participation in the walk.
Thanks, Andrew.
Yeah, thanks, Andrew. And this is Derek. Um so just to run through these acronyms, um we've got COCA, which is uh Central Oregon Coalition on Access. And we've got CODSN, which is the Central Oregon Disability Support Network. OAS is Oregon Adaptive Sports. As people know what ODOT is, um Department of Transportation, BPRD is Bend Parking Recreation. And um yeah, we know the other ones. So um the other one I was thinking of is uh this uh Deschutes County also has a bicycle pedestrian advisory committee that I attend those meetings regularly. And we can um put this in front of them as well.
Whitney?
Yeah, I wanted to just bring up the fact that we did have on there, please RSVP, and then we did set a cap on number of people. Um so just along with this is highlighting the RSVP thing. And then if we, I'm I'm curious too, if we hit, I can't remember that number, if we said twenty would be the max we'd want to work with. Um so uh like, and if I guess if we get more than that, if we could break up into two two groups is the only thing that as we talk about all these wonderful um community partners that we could pull in, maybe there's some Plan B if we have more. So thanks. And I don't know if I said this is Whitney, but, yeah.
Yeah, this is Carl. Um I'm, yeah, I think it's good that you brought that up. So we have a plan like I I worry that we won't get enough people, but I also worry that we'll get too many people. And if that happens, I think breaking into two groups um is a good idea. I think we could probably plan to wait. I think we could probably plan to wait, make that decision day of, be a little flexible about that. Certainly wouldn't want to turn people away, right? And then Cassandra, in, in response to your sort of invitation, I, I think I have some people in my personal network who I'm going to reach out to and invite individually by text. Take that as an action item to do after the meeting today. Mostly people within the sort of adaptive outdoor sports community here in town.
Cassandra, that sounds great, Carl, thank you.
This is Liz, Deitha Martin, that's in the Orchard District Neighborhood Association, or Neighborhood. And they have their annual meeting on April 29th. So it'd be great to announce it there. So I can just share. Do we have that, that graphic as a shareable?
Yeah, it should be in your email, that went to everybody, right?
It went to Derek, Whitney and Carl, you, just for any edits, if there is anything that you all wanted. But I will certainly share it out if we're feeling okay with the, the design and the no typos, yeah.
Yeah, and this is Derek, a couple of opportunities to promote this. So I'll be tabling at the Earth Day Parade this Saturday. That's from the Environmental Center, so I can certainly print some off and bring them. And I'm also tabling at the Orchard District. They invited us to, to give some information about our, our bus system, so I can have that there as well.
Oh, good.
Sounds great, and a big thanks to Whitney for the design of this flyer, and also Derek and Carl for your organization. The three of you have really, it's going to be a great event, so I'm really looking forward to it.
And Cassandra, this is Derek, I predict 74 degrees and sunny for that day, so.
Well, well, we'll see what happens now.
This is Liz Woodfin, I would love a copy of that flyer graphic too, and I can send that out to folks who I'm connected with, several of them on that list. All right. Does that conclude that agenda item? Do we have any more discussion on the walk and roll event? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the COBAC support letters. First up, the dogs off leash and the impact on people with disabilities. And that is authored by Aaron Rivers.
Ian did most of the work, but both of our names are on it.
Say that again, Aaron.
Ian did most of the work, but he told me to put my name on it.
It was a collaborative effort.
Right.
So Cassandra, did we want to read this letter out loud? How did we want to navigate this conversation?
Now, that's a great question, Liz, this is Cassandra. However, COBAC members feel most comfortable, you should have received an email with the most updated version of the letter just like, maybe like an hour before the meeting. So it should be in your inbox. If you're in council chambers, you should have a printed copy, thanks to Lisa. Or we can also, please don't try to read on the screen. It was mostly disposed to be demonstrative of the excitement of having the letter, because it's very small font. So we could read it out loud, if people want to take different chunks, we could just take a moment to review it individually. I really defer to you, Liz, as the chair.
I'm going to go ahead and say, let's just take some time to read it, read it to ourselves. And then if we have any comments or suggestions, then we can, we can discuss those.
That sounds great.
This is Carl, the grammarian in me will point out that the paragraph after Aaron's testimony should say affect with an A instead of effect with an E.
Thanks, Carl.
No problem. It looks like we spell out the acronym B P D, but not B P R D. That could potentially be confusing.
I have that too, thank you.
All right, I'm going to bring the group back together, this is Liz Woodfin. Do we have any other feedback or questions about this letter?
This is Stephanie, I just noticed that there's a space missing between, um, yeah, B P D. In parentheses, it's item number one under the COBAC's recommendations, B P D and the two. There are just space between that.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, any other questions or feedback? Cassandra, would you like us to vote on these letters separately? Or can we vote, vote on them together?
Thanks, Liz, for the question, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and vote on them separately, just to avoid any confusion. And any, any kind of vote could be inclusive of those three edits from Carl and Stephanie. The A of effect, spelling out Bend Parks and Recreation District, and then also the space after B P D. Thank you for those edits.
Right, do we have a motion to approve the letter with the edits?
Um, hang on, sorry, this is Carl again. So this, I'm just thinking this through. So this, this letter is addressed to the city of Bend and the Bend Parks and Recreation District. But it also, it says, we suggest the following actions. Ask City Council, are we, are we suggesting that somebody ask City Council? Or are we, in, in writing this letter, asking them? Do you know what I mean? Does that seem weird?
I'm glad that you brought that up too, Carl, because that brings up another question for me to, especially if we're, we're asking the Bend Police Department to have one of these action items. I guess we need to figure out who exactly are we addressing this letter to? And how can we make sure that these actionable items are being communicated and adopted?
This is John, isn't the letter going to City Manager Eric King? Who's our direct city person that we respond to, or that we're under?
Right now, it's addressed to City of Bend and Bend Park and Recreation District.
But yeah, I mean, that, that would make sense, right, to address it to Eric. And then, and then I don't think that it needs any rewording when we say, we suggest asking City Council and B P D to do something, right? Because we're sort of asking him to do that on our behalf, right?
Right.
If I'm reading it right.
So would that then essentially remove the Recreation District from that address?
This is Aaron, I, I might be speaking for Ian, I know he's not here today. I think he wanted, I guess, I think his intent was to encourage the Park and Rec District to collaborate with the Bend P D, specifically the community outreach officers. So I think he is intending this to be sent to B P R D to encourage them to collaborate with the Bend P D.
Okay.
And I think that's what the asks are. He works the Parks Department, so, or the, the Parks District, so I think he has some stuff. But I think he's, the, what he's trying to spur is a letter telling B P R D to work with the Bend Police Department in a more active manner, if that makes sense.
Understood. Cassandra?
Cassandra? Thanks, Liz. I, I think that there is also a possibility of just breaking out the letters in two separate issuance, right? We could certainly do it to City Bend City Manager Eric King. And then additionally, a separate letter could go to Bend Park and Recreation, where you could just say C C for either one, to let them know that the other has been shared with, related to a kind of the collaborative items that have to do with both City Bend, City Staff, and also Bend Parks and Rec staff as well. So that is an option that's available to the group and an edit that could be made as well.
Yeah, this is Derek, I mean, I think a potential fix is, you know, with all these action items, you know, it's encourage, encourage, support, and the ask in the first one, just seems a little out of place. Maybe it's, you know, encourage City Council and Bend Police Department to coordinate prioritization of off-leash enforcement or something like that. That's, so then it's not like a direct, like who's asking, it's more of a general statement. Of making sure that these two entities come together to talk about this issue. That could be more.
I think, this is Aaron, I, I, I think those all make sense. I think Ian's original intent was to, you know, communicate to the Bend Parks and Rec District to, you know, step up enforcement, to collaborate, and then also to address it to either the City Council or Eric King, because they then can instruct the Police Department to take action or collaborate. Or when the City Council tells the Police Department to do something, that tends to lead results. I think that was the intent at least.
Do I hear a preference of how we should move forward?
This is Derek, I think if you're going to use ask, you need to clarify who's asking. That's my only opinion.
Right, I mean, the whole thing could be strengthened. I think the important thing about this letter would be to be very clear what the ask is and who was asked it of, right? Since it's a good conversation. We do, there's a lot of hedging in that sentence to enhance the accessibility, safety, blah, blah, blah. I think that the be taken into consideration could be deleted, because it's just more. So I would end up, COBAC recommends the following actions. And then you would get rid of ask and just say, City Council and Bend Police Department work together to prioritize. Down as I'm thinking about. Yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know the right tone for this. Like, are we asking that, or are we just, so this is our recommendation. If you're, you know, this is what we're here for, this is our recommendation.
I know this letter has been on the table for quite some time, Aaron, and I'm, I don't want to delay any further, but I think before we can vote on this letter to be presented to the City Manager, we really should have, you know, the final edits of this letter. And so my recommendation to COBAC is one of two things. Either we can just vote on the edits that we have now and push it forward, or take, take one more time and have it re-presented maybe next meeting before we, before we send it.
Uh, this is Aaron, and I wanted to follow up, I think, on something that Liz just said, just to confirm that her to write that for the bottom of page one and into page two, instead of saying, I just want to reflect this back to make sure you understand it, that instead of having words like ask, basically instead of, say, these, instead of those, just these are recommendations. Number one, City Council and Bend Police Department need to prioritize off-leash. Number two, get rid of the word encourage. And number three, get where the, where the, rid of the word encourage again. And then, number four, would it be ask for continued? Or I guess I wa, I was curious what those changes would sound like and how, how, I think those sound like good ideas. I just wanted to get more insight on what those changes would be. Is Liz still there?
Yes, are you asking me? I'm sorry, were you asking?
Oh, yeah, yeah, who are, I think you, you're the one who said, right, said you didn't like the sentence too excessive, to, to enhance the accessibility, safety and overall experience. Instead of, we suggest, you say, just get rid of that, the word suggests basically says that COBAC recommends the following. City Council, number one, City Council and Bend Parks and Rec should prioritize, or, you know, put the right verb tense. And then the same with three, two, three and four, instead of saying like encourage, like change that to an active word of do or something like that, is that right?
B P R D installs additional targeted, or should install, or does install.
Will install?
Our recommendations, B P R D installs, let's just do installs.
I guess maybe just in general though, to go from an, an asking, asking sentence to a telling sentence, or to a, I can't remember the name of that term, but sort of, so these are more, currently they're stated as asks. It'd be better to say as more of a direct instruction, not an ask, but instruct to. Is that right, sort of in a nutshell?
Yeah, one way that might help that is above that first paragraph, that paragraph to enhance the accessibility, just put a heading, COBAC recommendations, just to make it really clear, this is what's happening.
I think that sounds good, it's less wordy too, but, yeah, that sounds good to me. And I don't know, yeah, to, to Liz's point, if this is something better done, I guess edited and then voted on again, or what would be the best way to can make the changes and have it approved?
This is Cassandra, if I could, I think based on the totality of maybe proposed edits at this point, that we should, I can edit from the minutes that we've received and then send it back out for one final review of all COBAC members to have time to submit to me individually any edits. And then we can present it during the May meeting, if that works, all right? But keep this in draft form, knowing that that, it is intended to be passed, hopefully with all finalization of edits in May. Does that sound okay, Aaron and the rest of COBAC members?
Yeah, so just to understand that, so basically, everybody's going to get a chance to send edits to you. You can kind of amalgamate those into a final draft that we could vote on next month. Amalgamate those into a final draft that we could vote on next month. That sounds good to me.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll make sure all the edits from today's conversation are put in before um, before sending out another version.
Sounds good. Um, does part of this need to be addressed, uh, who it's directed to? Or is that part of the editing process? Is that like starting from over, starting over?
I, I think so. So if I recall, what we have on the table before is is the possibility of uh, including City Manager Eric King. Uh, and then um, in, in addition, we could potentially add City Council members. Uh, and still keep Ben Parks and Recreation District based upon the information you shared about kinda Ian's desire to make sure that gets in front of them. So we could include all three, or we could send individual letters to each of them that are a little bit more curtailed. It would be a little bit more work. Um, but uh, it, it's up to COBAC members. Yeah.
I'd say at this point, but based the amount of work it takes to get one letter out, I think we probably stick with that goal versus multiple.
Sounds good.
Cassandra, this is Derek. If it helps, I can leave my written changes here for you um, with. In council chambers, if you wanted to look at what we wrote down and crossed out.
Thanks Derek. I, I think I've just been taking notes, so any kind of edits that I'll make just from the record, I'll do that and then send out for you to kind of. Add additional edits as you see fit uh, in a, in a time and space that allows. So thank you for that.
Alright, so let's go ahead and um, let's uh. Have those edits sent to us in email format um, as Cassandra suggested and then. Re-present this uh, letter in um, May. And do I need to have a vote of that or, okay. Alright, so let's go ahead and move on to the next letter um, authored by uh, Andrew.
Yeah, oh, sorry, keep going.
Oh, this uh, this letter is uh, to the members of the Regional Pump- Public Transit Advisory Committee. Um, Andrew, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, I will, I'll just have people um, read along while I'm saying things uh, just to go a little bit faster. Uh, just for some context, I wanted to leave this letter pretty general, just so that folks could read it and then make suggestions or potential edits. As needed, because I didn't, you know, I just, I figured it would be good for all of us to kind of. Uh, together have the opportunity to, to make some input. Um. The letter just kind of generally outlines um, the impact that the absence of any reliable transportation has. Uh, between the two campuses and how that's affecting these populations. Uh, it doesn't really make any specific asks of the committee, other than just to look at exploring ways to increase that accessibility in transit. Be it through um, bus route, micro-transit or other options, just because that was one of the pieces of feedback that I got um. During the last uh, Public Transit Advisory Committee meeting I was able to attend was just that um, in keeping it more general, the ask. It would give them uh, some more flexibility in terms of looking at options. Um, so yeah, I, that was mainly my, my goal is just, I wanted to, to very generally kind of outline. The, the need for additional transportation, talking about some of the losses that were experienced. Uh, both because of COVID closures and then also the reduction in funding in certain areas. Um. One of the things that I didn't address too much in this letter was any of the kind of current. Federal state uncertainty with transit, just because I think that that's kind of a. Messy area that I was not super inclined to get into the weeds on. Um, but that's pretty much the um, general gist of. Why I wrote what I wrote, but in terms of what I'm hoping for from. Folks from COBAC is just if anyone has any additional points or things that they uh, want either. To have changes made to the existing letter or ways and areas that it could be expanded to be more helpful and thoughtful. Uh, I welcome all of that feedback.
Yeah, Andrew, this is Derek and, and I'll jump in here. Um, and I believe at our last meeting, the uh. Regional Public Transit Advisory Committee members, um, they echoed your thoughts about, you know, not maybe. Calling this Route 12 or re- bringing back Route 12, but in, uh, you know, in equivalent service. So my. Suggestions would be to add the or an equivalent service on the first sentence. Where it says, strong support of the re-establishment of Route 12 or an equivalent service. It's mentioned everywhere else and also in the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, restoring this route or an equivalent service would demonstrate. A meaningful commitment and that provides flexibility because I think it was. You know, that route didn't function well as a fixed route, but it could potentially function well. As a micro-transit or a shuttle service or something like that. So those would be the, the changes that I would, I would recommend. Um, just to allow a little more flexibility.
Yeah, this is Andrew speaking again. Thank you Derek. That's really helpful.
Any, any other edits or comments, questions about this letter? Okay.
Well, okay. This is Liz. Um, there's a, a third paragraph. I'm, I'm having a little trouble with it. I, does it need to ver- as an advisory body committed to improving accessibility and inclusive inclusivity throughout Ben. We recognize the exploration and creation of additional access, accessible transit options. Oh, as, as a practical step or. Are a practical step toward restoring lost connectivity and a necessary action to ensure. Oh, yeah, it's a lot.
Sounds like maybe um, a request to simplify that sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can uh, this is Andrew speaking again. I, yeah, that is kind of a mouthful and I've been known to write very long sentences. I can. I can tweak that a little bit and find a more graceful um, spot to either put in a period or put in a semicolon.
About this, Andrew, um. Uh, as an advisory body committed to improving accessibility and inclusive inclusivity throughout Ben, we recognize the exploration. Creation of additional accessible transit options. Restoring lost connectivity. Wait, I'm lost. Sorry. Um, yeah, nevermind. I gotta.
Uh, yeah, that, that should at least be broken into two sentences. And so, but do we need to reiterate? Or iterate the first part as an advisory body committed to improving accessibility. Um. Maybe that can be, you know, separated and then uh. Uh, maybe it's not recognize um, uh, the.
We support.
We support exploration and creation of additional. Accessible transit options as a way or practical step toward restoring lost connectivity. And a necessary action. Oh.
Yeah, my, this.
Kind of lost at the end there.
This is Derek. My suggestion was just to put a period at the uh, and in creation of accessible transit options, period. Restoring lost connectivity and then it is a necessary action to ensure equitable access. So just like, starting that as a new sentence.
Oh yeah, that's much, this is Andrew. That, that's much better. I think that's uh, I think that's the fix.
And I think we could be good with pushing this through.
And then uh, Cassandra, I have a question for you, just because I'm not sure how the process works. Once we have a finalized. Draft, do we just send it to you and then do we stick this on like any sort of like COBAC letterhead, or do we just send it sort of as is with edits?
Great question, Andrew. This is Cassandra. So when, uh, when and if uh, COBAC goes ahead and approves it and it's from the body, so we can respectfully sign it from the group. Um, we can add it to city letterhead. Uh, we don't have specific COBAC letterhead, but we could add that. Um, and then have that shared out to you to be able to share, if you'd like specifically as the author to that. Regional Public Transit Advisory Committee, um, or whatever you'd like most, we can, we can operate with that. Yeah.
And then one more question uh, for Derek, just since you're, obviously you're on uh, RPACT. Do you feel like the letter is addressed appropriately, or do you feel like it would be more impactful if who the letter was addressed to was tweaked in any way?
Uh, this is Derek. No, I think it's good. Um, and I manage this particular committee, so all, all abstain on voting, just to not mix uh, the streams here. Um, but I, I think it's good. And, and Cassandra, once it's finalized, you can, you can send it to me and I can, I will uh, present it to the advisory committee. If that is enough.
If Andrew's okay with that, that works for me.
Yeah. Were there any other thoughts, comments or bits of feedback for this letter?
So Andrew, just for the bit, this is Derek, for the benefit of the group, what we're changing is in the first sentence, uh, re-establishment of Route 12. Uh, comma or an equivalent service. The third paragraph, we're gonna say creation of additional accessible transit options, period. And then the next sentence starts with restoring lost connectivity is a necessary action to ensure equitable access to opportunity. The third change is restoring this route or an equivalent service would demonstrate a meaningful commitment. And those are the changes that we've reviewed.
Awesome. Alright, I've got all of those penciled down on my notes. Um, would it be appropriate for me to make a motion to vote on this, or should I leave that to someone else?
This is Derek. I would think it would be appropriate.
Okay, cool. Just wanna make sure I'm doing this right. Uh, I would like to motion uh, that I be given permission to make the. Changes that Derek just stipulated, uh, and then send this letter as amended. To Cassandra to then be sent out to the Regional Public Transit Advisory Committee, and I would love. This body to vote to approve that.
Yeah, this is Carl. I, I'll, um. Vote a second that. We have to vote?
Yep.
I. Are we voting? I.
So, I.
And I believe Derek is abstaining um, for co- conflict of interest. Um. So.
You don't vote to recommend things to yourself.
A motion passes.
Thanks, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. Next up, we've got COBAC Roundtable. What's happening in the world?
Uh, I can go. This is John. I'm online. Um. I had been seeing probably every three weeks, an article about people out in the wilderness being accosted by dogs from houseless people. And I don't know if you guys know this, but last August, my kid was at a garage sale in Bend and got bit in the face and had two, almost two centimeters of her lower lip torn out. Um, and that didn't make the news. Uh, so I emailed KTVZ and said, hey. There's lots of dog attacks that happen in Bend. Why aren't you touching base on those? It seems kind of front-loaded to. This whole houseless hate machine. And they reached out to me and interviewed me today and I put them, I gave them Aaron's contact info also, because I mentioned his uh. Wanting to write a letter as a committee to BPRD in the city. So there should be a piece on that tonight about dogs, which hopefully will be good. And um. Yeah, so that's, that's the updates I got.
Uh, this is Aaron. I just wanted to add to that and thank you for the reference. I reached out to that reporter and said, I was, was gonna be able to make her deadline. I think it was 1:00 PM. So I appreciate the referral, but I wasn't able to get to her in time. But um, I think your story has a lot of gravity to it anyways, and hopefully can draw some attention to this.
This is Stephanie. You know, after our last meeting, I was wondering, because this is clearly not uh, you, and a situation that's unique to Bend. Dogs and humans coexist in every single city. And so I was like, how, you know, this has got to be something that another. Uh, city or municipality has had to deal with. And so I did a quick Google search and I realized, or I found. That the city of Vancouver, BC, um, actually. Took this under as a project. There's like a ti- a ten-year plan. And um, they had, they published, they have this big. Paper that they published and I downloaded it and I can certainly email, email it out to the group. And I don't know, I mean, maybe if the city of Bend um, is, if it's something that they want to tackle. Or really, you know, try to find a more systemic and long-term solution to this problem is maybe collaborating with another. Another, another jurisdiction that's already handled it and figure out, you know, why recreate the wheel. Uh, maybe take that model and adapt it to our community as a long-term plan, because you know, we're growing. Um, we are a dog town, we're a recreation town, so this is con- this is just gonna get worse if we can't get a handle on it. Um, I've noticed that Parks and Rec have been really beefing up their notices to the community and commercials and. Um, public service and, and announcements concerning off-leash dogs. Um, and that's great, but you know, the worry that I have is that this is, the efforts are gonna be front-loaded and then it's gonna have to taper off. Um, and so maybe exploring a more long-term, you know, creating a committee um, to address this. Might be something that the city wants to look into. Anyway, it's my two cents. Also, while I've got the microphone. Um, I'm assuming you've all heard about the um. The verbal outputs on um. Yes, the signals up in Seattle that have been um, basically hacked. And so they put, so when people hit, you know, you hit a walk signal and it will tell you not to walk or to walk.
And.
And they were, they had recorded over with um. It's other stuff concerning some of like tech Bezos and Elon Musk and whatever. Um, and you know, the uh, a lot of people thought that was funny and cute. But I'm wondering how many other people were just completely pissed off about it, because. While that's a funny joke, there's, there are people who rely on those announcements to know when it's safe. To cross the street. I'm so glad that that did not happen in our community and I hope that they were able to resolve that quickly, but. I just was so angry when I heard that. But that was even an option. I had no idea how easy it is to hack into those. Apparently it's pretty easy. Anyway, that's all I have.
Andrew?
Yeah, this is Andrew speaking. Just a couple of updates uh, for the group. I had the chance to meet with Cassandra and I am. Horribly sorry, but I'm completely blanking on her name from Emergency Management. Um.
Carrie Carl.
Say again?
Carrie Carl.
Oh yeah, sorry. Yeah, sorry about that. I had the chance to meet with uh, Cassandra and Carrie Carl to talk a little bit further about. Uh, Deschutes County Emergency Management and Accessibility, just because one of the um. Longer-term goals for Oregon Disability Commission's work plan for the year is uh, working on statewide efforts around emergency management and accessibility. And so we had a lot of uh, really good conversations and got some super good feedback. From Cassandra and Carrie Carl on that front, and I've been since then reaching out to a couple of my. Folks that I know over on the Oregon Human Services side, as well as the Oregon uh, DMV side of things to see about uh, efforts to get more. Folks with disabilities registered for the voluntary um, accessibility. Alerts specifically. Um, there were a lot of other cool things that came up from that conversation and then in. My other capacity as the Legislative uh, Coordinator for the Oregon Health and Equity and Employment Disability Coalition, we had our big. Um, Advocacy Day over at the State Capitol to uh, stump for. Um, increases to the employed persons with a disability program to make it so that folks with disabilities can. Work and keep their Medicaid. Uh, we took a lot of meetings with a lot of different legislators. Uh, had folks from the IDD community, the brain injury community and quite a few other groups. Come down and uh, it was pretty productive and, you know, in spite of kind of a terrible year to be asking the state for money, we had a lot of really promising conversations. Including a pretty awesome photo, photo op with uh, Senator Broadman, who's one of our chief sponsors and all of our advocates, and I'm. happy to pass that along to Cassandra, to pass along to everyone else, if you guys would be interested in seeing and learning more.
Absolutely, we would, Andrew.
Aaron?
Thanks, I just wanted to respond back to, I think, what Liz said about Vancouver, B.C. Um, I just would like to, she could share that information she gathered, and I'd love to take a look at it, and if I could avoid uh doubling her effort, I'd love to see what other cities are doing, and if anybody's ever cracked this nut.
This is Stephanie. Yeah, I can send that out. I'll, I'll email it out to the group.
Thank you.
This is uh Liz Deetha Martin. Um, my, my boss, my awesome, fabulous boss, I, so I build websites and do digital communication for a research, research center out of the University of Washington. We are all about uh making technology accessible and making the world accessible through technology, and um doing a bit of advocacy. Uh, she had, my boss, Jennifer Mankoff, had a letter to the, or an opinion article uh published in the Seattle Times yesterday. Um, in her article, uh, she talks about, you know, uh, some of the things that are under attack um in terms of protecting the rights and well-being of people with disabilities. And uh, in her letter, she lists some actions that people can take, and I would love to direct people to um the webpage uh with that information. Um, I can also send that out, or we can try to send all of these things all at one time, I don't know. Um, but um, yeah, a lot of it is just, you know, keep advocating, keep talking to your representatives, no matter, you know, uh, wh- where they sit in, in uh their Congress uh building or room, um, and um, and, and also includes the Department of Education, of course, because lots of our kids are being taken care of, um, or had been being taken care of. I'm not sure, but um, yeah. Sorry for the.
This is Cassandra. Thank you so much for sharing that, Liz. I did get the um, the link that you shared, and I'll send it out to COBAC members, and Stephanie, if you want to share um the information also from Washington, that'd be great. And I will um also share Andrew's photo and any information supplementally uh with the group as well, so feel free to email me, and then I'll send it out in uh one large email, which I very much look forward to.
All right, this is Liz Woodfin. Um, due to time, um, we're gonna wrap up the roundtable uh with one final thought about um Breaking Barriers, which was an amazing conference, and I'm so delighted that I was able to be there. Um, it is an event full of joy and learning, and it was so exciting to see um many self-advocates and um enjoy those uh sessions that they, that they put on. So thank you for all of those people who organized and attended um Breaking Barriers, and hopefully COBAC is in attendance next year, April 21st, 2026. All right, um, the city councillor update, um, um councillor um Mendez is not here today. Um, so we're going to move past that. Um, let's briefly talk about agenda senti- as agenda setting um for May.
Um, this is Carl, that, that will be after our walk and roll day, so we'll um maybe take five minutes and do a, do a debrief on that, or we could take a few more minutes and discuss, you know, what went well, what we want to improve for the next time.
All right, anything else?
Uh, this is Derek. We will need to approve uh the dog leash letter on that one, once the edits are done, so let's just make sure that we get that on there as well.
Cassandra, do you have any thoughts about May's meeting?
Nope, I believe that we can include both those items easily, uh, and I don't think at this point we've got any city staff presentations, but that is uh subject to potentially change based on a couple of scheduling, so nothing for the good of the group at this time. Thanks, Liz.
Right. Well, without further ado, um, let's adjourn this meeting at 2:35. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.